City Council Meeting for April seventeenth, please stand and join me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And the roll?
Vaughn Sullivan.
Aye.
Shower. Kenny.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Here.
Clistic.
Here.
Belzak.
Here.
Five present and two absent.
We have a quorum, takes us to questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. This is an item on our agenda that allows members of the audience to come forward and share with the council anything that they, that is not on the agenda that they think is critical and needs to, they need to inform the council. So is there anyone who would like to address the council on any issue other than an agenda item? Hi, just state your name.
Dave Kadek, back again. Sorry, I missed last time. We had a little bit of work travel stuff, so I hope everything went well. Yeah, I just wanted to call, check up on the progress on Sixty-seventh Street. I know Mr. Gronback and I had gone back and forth on email on a couple of things, and it seems that the speed study's been completed and that there's a lot being left up to law enforcement in terms of to stop speeding, slow down drivers, make things a little bit more safe. So I just wanted to see if that is kind of what we're doing moving forward, or if there's any other measures we'll be looking to take.
At this time, there's no other measures.
Okay.
We did look at the actual speed, speed, and the obedient eighty-fifth percentile of the speed was approximately thirty, thirty-one miles per hour. Now, yes, there were some occasions where there was several vehicles that were in excess of that. Again, whether or not those were actual emergency vehicles, unknown, but you could put some stipulation to that as well. I'm not sure if, Greg, can you comment on Sixty-seventh Street any further?
We always have this directed patrol, and so officers see the different areas where there's directed patrol. Sixty-seventh Street is one of those, and so they go out almost daily and monitor that roadway.
Sure. Yeah, and they do a great job. And I got somebody pulled over in front of my house. I put up one of those signs, you know, drive like your kids live here. Pulled out right in front of him. It was made for a great photo op. And so I appreciate that. I, I don't want it to just become a reactive situation. I think that the nature of the street really encourages those kind of outlier cases of like, sure, maybe eighty-five percent of traffic is going thirty, thirty-five miles an hour, but it's that dangerous fifteen percent that might be a little bit worse than your standard residential street. And I would love to know what does that fifteen percent look like? And when we're getting those drivers doing forty-five, fifty, sixty miles an hour during morning times, during kids are getting on the bus, that sort of stuff, that's what's concerning to me. And I think I would love to look into some measures that maybe are easier, you know, the, the crossing signs, you know, the triangle with the two people, you know, doing that one. There are a couple of crossing spots, like at the bus stops. I know Ridge, there's a bus stop. And then further up at, I believe it's Willmet and Ridge, there's two different names there right by Delay School. There's also a lot of crossings that happen there, maybe additional, you know, the more like Abbey Road style marking in the street rather than just the two streets. Just to raise awareness of, hey, you guys are on a residential street going forty-five miles an hour, not a great idea. Because I do get to that bus stop twice a day, two kids in different grades, and I do see a lot of forty, forty-five miles an hour during that time, which is concerning. So I don't know if we need to do anything as extreme as the ballers, that sort of stuff, but just maybe some additional signage, make it feel a little more residential. Could also have an impact, and then we don't have to rely as much on enforcement.
If I may comment, Mayor?
Yeah.
One of the things that I had recommended in the email, I refer to them as GNOs, which basically are those little placards that show, sometimes they'll have a little vision with a flag, hey, our children live here. In my opinion, those have been very, very proactive, but residents need to be vigilant and need to move them around. So when, when motorists see them, hey, it catches the ride. Whereas a sign, if you put a sign up and leave it there in one, you know, I've been in situations where it says, slow children. My opinion, again, somewhat of a useless sign because it's been there for years.
Sure.
I've had residents say, let's put up a slow children sign, and the sign is already out there. So again, that becomes stale.
Sure.
You know, maybe if there's a program that the city can help initiate for residents like yourself, they're very inexpensive.
Oh, yeah.
And maybe it's a, it's a share, cost-share program, but residents need to be part of the program. We can put up a crosswalk, sure. Whether or not we put up the crosswalk, again, the kids are here today. They're not here tomorrow because they moved, either they've moved or moved to a different school, or the bus routes change. You know, we see quite a bit of that. Every year, for example, we go back and we do snowplow routes, and we check with the schools so we don't pile snow on corners. So while crosswalks are somewhat effective, they become obsolete. And it's another maintenance where you have to keep them, you know, fresh, refreshed, to where it's really not worth the exercise sometimes.
Yeah, and I totally, you know, that's, I'm here to be educated. So anything else that we can consider, even with the police, if there's some sort of awareness thing, I know that was another thing someone else had brought up, like letting people to live on the side streets, like, hey, you know, you guys live here too. A lot of times, those are the people that are doing a lot of the speeding as well. I am all for doing whatever. I'll get creative. I'll stand out there with the sign, and you know, everyone's got to slow down on a weekend, maybe when it gets a little nicer, but, and just let people know that it is a residential, residential street, and those extreme speeds do cause concern. I don't want to get to a point where we're waiting for something to happen to then, you know, take the next step. I would rather take that step now.
Those ballers are working?
I, I mean, to me, they seem nice. I mean, I love them. I mean, I did see, you do see cars, like, maybe they like threading the needle and going through super fast, but for the most part, I do see people slow down. But I live directly on the west side of it, and obviously, the, the policeman had pulled that person over, like, right in front of my, so they had obviously gone through them and then got pulled over. So, yes, I think that anything like that is helpful, and we saw the reduction in traffic, which I think is good. It's that outlier, that fifteen percent, that could be, you know, maybe it's not thirty-five, forty, but it's forty-five, fifty, sixty, that sort of stuff is what's concerning because of the nature of the, how long and straight the street is.
I haven't seen it get up to sixty, but at the same time, our reports also document the times. And if they're habitual, obviously, that gives the police department an opportunity to be there during those times. And many times, if not all the times, those motorists that are speeding are local residents.
For sure.
So again, you know, it's, it's enforcement, and I think with the traffic signal, that'll be coming up.
I'm excited about that, yeah.
Within three months at Sixty-seventh Street, that'll be another opportunity to help gauge on what will be happening. I'm thinking there'll be a reduction even in traffic.
Cool.
Just for the reason that that light will be the secondary, or not the primary light, if you want to say, primary traffic will be cleared in Hills Road, Northbound and Southbound. Are people going to wait, want to wait approximately two minutes, or are they going to go to Sixty-third Street, for example?
Let's hope. All right. I won't take any more time. Thank you. I'm very, very much.
Thank you. Thank you. All right. It takes us to approval of the minutes. I'd like a motion and a second for the approval of the Administrative Finance Committee of the whole for February twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three.
Sorry.
Moved by Alderman Kennedy.
No, no, nope. Take, take, take that back.
Okay.
I heard minutes. I was thinking of my regular city council meeting. I apologize, Mayor. I wasn't here on the twenty-second.
Okay. Moved by Alderwoman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Any questions or comments? If none, the roll?
Sullivan.
Aye.
Belzak.
Aye.
Gustafson.
Aye.
Shower. Oh, he's not here. Kenny?
Abstain.
I have three ayes, two absent, and one abstention.
Okay.
Who did?
Tom.
Didn't call Tom.
I'm sorry. Clistic.
Aye.
Were absent.
Oh, that's abstain.
Right.
Minutes, the motion passes.
That's fine. If you weren't there, if you believe those are reflective, though, just so you know.
Well, there, there, there's not a lot to them, so.
No, there's not a lot.
I would ask then for a motion and a second for the Administrative Finance Committee of the whole for February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-three.
No, raise my hand.
Moved by Alderman Kennedy, seconded by Alderman Gustafson. Questions or comments? If none, the roll?
Kenny?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent.
Those minutes are approved. And finally, motion and a second to approve the city council minutes of April third, twenty-twenty-three. Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderwoman Sullivan. Again, questions or comments? If none, the roll?
Belzak?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent.
The minutes have been approved. Takes us to receiving of communications. Is there any of the alderpeople have minute, any messages they'd like to convey to the council? Mary?
Yes, I did receive a communication today, and I've reached out to municipal services, Dan Gronback and his team, about a mattress and some furniture that had been dumped or managed to get themselves off the back of a truck along North Frontage Road near the entrance of Carriage Greens along the side of the road. As we all are aware, Frontage, North Frontage Road is an IDOT road, but because it is fairly significant amount of stuff and pretty unsightly, Dan did say that they'll work on getting that picked up. Patricia Jason had reached out to me, and I also noticed it as well. And then I continue to receive ongoing communications from various residents regarding the North Frontage Road, the fence being down, you know, all, all of that, and I have shared with them that we are, in addition to coordinating things with IDOT, we are hopeful that a project will take place within the next two years. We are also reaching out to Senator John Curran's office and looping him in and hoping that he can help us expedite the process.
We'll be meeting with them when we go down to Springfield this week.
Yes, we will.
Okay. Thank you, Mary. Anyone else? Okay. That takes us to the mayor's report, and tonight, we'll be making some reappointments to people who've served on a number of our committees. The first motion is for the invite, my, I'm asking for your advice and consent for the reappointment of John M. Breslin to the Police Pension Board. I have a motion. Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Gustafson. And again, John's not here tonight. He called, he talked to me today, and he's, he's home ill. Any questions? If none, the roll?
Belzak?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent.
The next one I'm asking for your advice and consent on is a motion to approve the reappointment of John J. Armolino to the Board of Fire and Police Commissioners, and John is here tonight. Do I have a motion? Alderwoman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Belzak. Any questions or comments? If none, the roll?
Sullivan?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent.
And finally, I'm asking for a consideration of a motion to approve the appointment of Robert Irk and Sylvia MacIver to the Environmental Committee. Motion to approve. Alderman Belzak, seconded by Alderman Gustafson. Any questions or comments? If none, the roll?
Belzak?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent.
Sylvia, will you and John please come forward for your swearing-in? John?
No. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Sylvia MacIver.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And the Constitution of the State of Illinois.
And that I will faithfully discharge.
And I will faithfully discharge.
The duties of.
The duties of.
Environmental committee.
Environmental committee.
And the Board of Fire and Police Commission, according to the best of your ability.
According to the best of my ability.
Congratulations, and here are your cards.
And I personally want to thank both of you for your service. We have great volunteers in the city. You're two of them. John, you've been on this board for a while. And I appreciate your re-upping and willingness to come back. And Sylvia, as always, it's a pleasure to have you serve, knowing how much you mean, this means to you. So thank you very much. And thank you for the donuts today. You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
And a friend of mine is here from Argon National Lab, a lady that I've gotten to know over the years on my visits to Argon. If you're not aware of it, Argon used, runs seminars and meetings at Argon, and during COVID, we actually met on Zoom. The last one I attended was the one on batteries that we had over there. And Robin's always there to greet me when I walk in. She knows I'm the mayor of Darien. This is her area. So I'm introducing Robin Wheeler Grange, Director, Office of Community Engagement, Argon National Lab, who's got a presentation for us tonight. Robin?
Thank you so much, Mayor. It's always a pleasure to see you. When the mayor comes onto the lab campus, I, he's right. I'm like, Mayor, hi! You know, I'm just always excited to see him because it's so important to have the, the engagement of our mayors and municipal leaders right around the laboratory. I'll start by telling you a quick story. So the mayor may or may not remember this, but on one of those Zoom calls in early, when I first began at the lab back in April twenty-twenty, we did a presentation of some of the science going on, and the, there was someone on the committee from Will County. And he said, you know, this is so fantastic, the work you're doing and the contribution you're making. You're the best-kept secret in, on, you know, in the suburbs, the west suburbs. And I said, you know, that is my job to make us not the best-kept secret, but to actually make sure that we are a well-known entity and one that is viewed as a contributor and a valued entity or organization within the western suburbs and actually even beyond within our region. So I'd like to take a moment to talk a little bit about the kind of community engagement work that the lab does engage in. But before I start with that, just to make sure we're all on the same page about who Argon is. Now, you're just, you're less than three and a half miles away from the laboratory, but you still may not know all of what we do. So I want to take a moment to just fill you in on that. So, so just quickly, I will not spend time reading all of that, but just to let you know, Argon is all about accelerating science and technology for the purposes of advancing United, the United States prosperity, economic prosperity, and security, national security. And so we have focuses in, you know, our primary thrust is scientific discovery, but we've got focuses in energy and climate solutions. And in fact, Sylvia and I know each other because of her work on your Subcommittee on Environment, so she's aware of some of the work we're doing in energy and climate. Cutting-edge research, that's the kind of facilities that we have there. As I mentioned, we're about security, making sure that we are protected from threats. And then, of course, developing, this is very important and has become more important over time, developing scientific leaders in STEM for the future. So these are our, sort of our thrusts. And then it's important to, for you also, to know what we contribute to your area, to the region, and to the state and beyond. We're one point, I don't know if you knew, that we are one-point-one-five-billion-dollar institution. Lots of money. The overwhelming majority of it comes from the Department of Educate, Department of Energy, but we do have funds that come in from other federal and state agencies. There are thirty-five hundred, and actually, I just heard the lab director talk about this, we're at thirty-eight hundred employees, some of whom come from Darien, right, and nearby, nearby communities, which includes eighteen hundred researchers, five hundred students. I sit in the operation side of the laboratory, and there are about eight hundred and fifty administrators. And then you see the rest, six thousand researchers that visit us, five national research centers, and we have three locations, not just here in Lamont, but we have a location at the Department of Energy, and we have a new office that opened March of, February of twenty-twenty in Chicago. I want to show you this quote because this helps transition to this idea of community engagement. The Secretary of Energy said this, that the greatest advancements in science and technology help no one if they don't get to the people and communities who need them most. The laboratory understands that the research is tremendous, and if you haven't had a chance to visit the lab, please let me know, because I'll make sure, maybe we'll do a tour with the council, right? You've got to see what's going on just down the street from you. It's, it's really awesome. However, that in and of itself doesn't mean anything if it's not touching communities, helping communities to be better and those that live in those communities. And so this quote is actually, has become sort of my mantra, right, as it relates to this new office that has been stood up, and it's called the Office of Community Engagement. It is only two months old, because we, actually, two and a half now. We stood it up in January. I became the director officially in January. And our mission is to, just really about building relationships. Seeing the mayor and him knowing that if he has a need, an interest, some sort of innovation, a need for some sort of technical assistance, he knows to call me, right? So it's about building these collaborative, trusted relationships with local communities as well as with the region. And we want to, as I mentioned, be viewed as a contributor to the regional ecosystem, right? Science and technology ecosystem. I won't go through all of this, but I will call your attention to the light blue and the purple. Remember, I just mentioned, we, one, one of our objectives is to make sure that we're reaching out and that we're reaching out, sharing what we do, so that we can look for strategic partnerships and relationships. And we also want to invest in long-term and sometimes short-term, whatever the communities are looking for, community-connected science, right? If they're, the mayor, and, and we need to circle back on this, but in one of our meetings, we were talking about energy, that, energy storage as it relates to batteries and maybe transitioning fleets to EVs as opposed to using all of the fuel, diesel fuel. And the mayor had an inquiry about what would that look like if it were, if, if your fleet of police cars became EVs? And if that was the case, and I look at the, at the chief, if that was the case, you know, what would be the benefits? What would be some of the challenges? What would the cost be? What, these are the kinds of things where Argon can be very, very helpful because the research that we're doing is, goes way beyond today. It's, it's looking ten, twenty years into the future. So we want to, we want to help. We want to be engaged. Another way we want to be engaged is your small business community. Argon has, I don't know the numbers, so, and I should, so pardon me for coming without the numbers, but we do a lot of business with small, with small businesses. And there's no reason why Darien's small business community should not be at least aware of the opportunities, if not even able to begin to relate and, and engage around some opera, small business opportunities at the laboratory. So I, I'll make sure to get you some of the numbers, what we do, right? How much business we do, and how much of that business is with small business. And it'd be great to begin, I'm happy to help convene meetings with our small business liaison to help introduce the opportunities to the Darien Chamber of Commerce. And then lastly, and there are many other ways that we engage, but I didn't want to take too much time. We like to have the community come to the laboratory. And so this is going to be the first, we're having an open house. It's Saturday, May twentieth, and this will be the first time that the lab has opened its doors in this way since twenty-sixteen. So it's been a while, and part of the reason is that COVID popped up at the time that we were looking to do the next open house, so we had to wait a little bit. But you'll see here that these are the kinds of experiences we're hoping that individuals who come will have. There'll be pavilions with science themes. You'll be able to, utilizing your phone, customize the experience you want to have and visit the exhibits you want to exhibit. It really is going to be a lot of fun. Now, that's the good news. Here's the challenging news. Don't be mad at me. But you see, this is on our website for the open house, and do you see that orange box? It says, "Join the waitlist." There was so much pent-up desire to come to the laboratory that we have now filled, we're now at beyond seven hundred people that have signed up. And so I would encourage you to do this. Join the waitlist. If you want to come, families, you know, whatever, please go on our website. All you have to do is put "open house" in the search box, and you'll get to this page, "Join the waitlist." But do me a favor. Let me know. That's why I gave you my cards and for your constituents. Let me know. Because if you let me know, I can't promise, but what I can do is see what I can do to, you know, internally, to make it happen because it doesn't make any sense for the people who live right next door to us to not have this opportunity. I'll do my very best to make sure you're able to sort of get in beyond the waitlist. Yes, Mayor?
Robin, I received my invitation today.
Okay.
And I registered. Does that mean I'm one of the?
The wait, well, did it, did you see this, "Join the waitlist"?
They, they, no, they approved my registration when I, after I got done.
You know why? Because I think you, are you coming on Friday? I bet you that's why.
I'm doing, I just signed up for the May twentieth because it showed all the, the tour and all that.
Yeah.
It's called Partners in Something.
That's it.
Yeah.
The day before the open house, we're having a Partner Day. And that's why I say, let me know if you want to come, because I'll try and work it out.
That's what I signed up for.
Right. Partner Day is for either those non-for-profits, civic leaders who have a relationship with us already, like the mayor, or who we hope to have a relationship with. And that's taking place the day before Friday from one to six-thirty, starting with a panel discussion, tours. Starting with a panel discussion, tours, ending with a reception. So you got accepted because that is not a part of this.
Okay.
This is general public. That's more for partners.
Okay.
And so that's what, why I say to you, let me know, because there might be ways to, to make sure that you get in. I think that's it. Yeah.
No, Robin, I don't know if people are aware, but our, one of our first seminars during COVID, Argon did a lot of research that allowed Moderna and Pfizer to develop the vaccines.
Yes.
Which, we had a whole presentation on that. That, that's when we were, we did Zoom.
Right, right, right.
And I have always found it fascinating, even the ones that were on, on Zoom, the, the research, the, the one on batteries that we saw, the one that I found amazing was that we are developing batteries that might fly airplanes someday. And my, my big fear was, gee, boy, if I'm on an airplane, what happens when the batteries go kaput? But I would advise all of you, if you haven't, haven't had a chance, to really participate. I've enjoyed every one of the seminars. And we get, we get a lot of nice people from Darien who actually attend the seminar. The one on batteries was fascinating. What was really interesting was, I think she made the comment, all these batteries have a life of about fifteen, fifteen years. And she said, just imagine, ten years from now, those cars that are driving with batteries will produce sixty thousand tons of batteries that need to be recycled. She says, and we have to figure out a way to recycle those batteries. And I thought to myself, my God.
Yeah.
That's, that's quite a feat.
At Argon, we handle the entire life of a battery. We work on building better batteries, right? We also work on when the battery
Recycling.
Has expired, then what to do with it. We have something called the Resale Center, and that's where that research is done. So, yes.
So about eleven years ago, my daughter had the opportunity to attend a young woman in engineering, I mean, she was in junior high at the time. And I know just last week, or maybe the week before, I, I cut through, I shouldn't say cut through, I drive down Cass to Bluff to go south to my father's house multiple times a week. And I saw lots of signs up, so there clearly was a woman in engineering program. So can you just talk for a minute about how you do programs for the youth and try to get them engaged in science and STEM?
Sure. We have an extremely robust STEM education program at the laboratory that goes from primarily middle school, a little bit elementary, but primarily middle school, all the way through to really the post-doctoral student, right? There's a lot of opportunities for internships, programming, like what you just described, Alderman Sullivan, which is called Girls, I think it's called Girls in Engineering Day. So that's for high school students. So there are, there's a lot of programming. Of course, as you saw me mention in the beginning, the idea of building STEM pathways for young people, so we have pathway, we have workforce for some of the science that's being done, is really, really important to the laboratory. It's important to the Department of Energy. I would encourage you, if you have an interest, because I wouldn't take time listing everything, if you go on the website and you just put in educational programs, it'll take you to our education program site. And you'll be just amazed at the multiple ways that your students, the students of Darien, can get involved in some of this powerful science. And I will tell you that beyond the interest of science, you know, it's fascinating, it, it expands the mind, it, it's mission-driven in that there's always some greater good you're trying to achieve. All of that is great, but it also pays well. I'll whisper that. Don't tell my boss, because she'll start looking at what it does. But it, it really does pay well. And so for students, it's just a tremendous opportunity all the way around. Go ahead.
Yes, I used to be Society of Automotive Engineer President, and we've had a few events at, at Argon. And I remember when we did those, we had to do a background check. So do residents have to go through a background check as well? So it's not just sign up and go. You have to sort of go through a background check.
Well, that's true. That's true. But it's, it's very, if you're a U.S. citizen, it's, it's really nothing. If you're a legal resident, there's one extra step you have to go through to make sure you're, you're eligible. But again, these are really perfunctory. You know, it's not, it's important, it's critical. You don't want someone who's from a, a, a bad actor to come to the laboratory, because there are some things that don't need to be disclosed to bad actors. But in general, it's really not a big deal.
I worked in science and engineering, so I think it was more thorough background check to see who was coming than maybe just general.
Yes, yes.
Businessperson or accountant coming in, right? What are they going to do with science?
Exactly. And even for the community leaders roundtable, on which the mayor sits and Sylvia and all, you, even they, if you recall, they have to fill out a form every time they come to the lab. But you see how quick and easy it is. It's, it's nothing.
Okay.
They know us by name.
Yeah.
Rota and Clodrian used to have their meetings there at, at, at Argon. And it was the same, same, same thing, right?
At the lodge, at the little house thing they have?
You had to, you had to give a, you had to.
No, we were in the hotel area.
Oh, the guesthouse. Yes, 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 yes. But again, I bet you still had to go through that, didn't you?
Yes, we did.
Yeah, yeah.
Robin, I think Dan, Dan Gombach has got a question.
Hi, Robin. I, I know I was involved with Argon through, from, for research for water years ago when well water was a larger issue. But regardless, I found it very interesting. And there's a lot of scientists, and maybe that's still the case, where they're stay, I'll call it stationed at Argon. What do they do for housing? Because one of the things that we're looking at is what's referred to as short-term rentals. So I kind of wanted to get a little bit of a background of how scientists are encouraged to come and work at Argon. And what's their typical stay? I'm not sure if you're the appropriate person to answer that.
Yeah, I don't know what their typical stay is, but I do know we have a guesthouse for that very purpose. But that's an interesting question. And I, I will circle back on that because we should, I think, if we're going to be, call ourselves good neighbors, we should be encouraging scientists, if for some reason there's no availability at the guesthouse, to stay in one, to support the businesses that are right around the laboratory. I don't know what your, your lodging is like in Darien, but it's certainly something that I think we should encourage. So thank you for bringing that forward.
I had a neighbor, three years ago, across the street from me, that they were both, they were husband and wife, were scientists from Switzerland that worked at Argon for a year.
Really?
Yeah, they rented the house for a full year.
Okay.
And it worked out great for the rental for them.
We, I wouldn't be able, that's, that's really, thank you for bringing that forward, because I wouldn't have never thought of that. But that's really good to know. And although we wouldn't be in the business of saying, hey, go to this Alderman's property, you know, whatever, but what we could do is create a list. I could work with Lisa Clem, make a list, and then provide it. Let people make a decision.
If I can get one of your business cards, we could have a chance.
Absolutely.
I had a neighbor too down the street that rented for a year.
Really? That's great to know.
He was a scientist with.
Okay.
Obviously, he was on a longer assignment than just, you know, a month or two.
Sure, sure, sure. Excellent to know. Thank you. So I've got two assignments. One is to make sure that you and I reconnect about electric vehicles, and the other is to maybe work with Lisa to develop something.
You know, Robin, we are part of the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus.
Yes.
The first cohort on EV readiness with Edith Mc, you know Edith.
I knew Edith, yeah, I know Edith.
And Dan has been spending a lot of time with Cheryl Scott and attending all the seminars. So we're, we're, we're looking probably for platinum status or silver status.
I would love to tell you gold, but we'll see, we'll see what opportunities there are. Yes, it's been a very evolving cohort at best. And, and you know, it's really all policy guidelines for, you know, municipalities all within the Chicagoland area. So it's a lot of challenges, a lot of bureaucratic red tape when you look at all the different departments that need to be synced together. But it's, yeah, I'm going to have to reach out to you in respect to that as well.
That would be good. We've got a systems analyst that looks at the, and informs individuals like you who are looking at the planning of infrastructure, EV infrastructure in communities. Where's the best place? Why here as opposed to there? What, how do your traffic patterns associate with where you're going to put your infrastructure, that kind of thing? She has a tool that's very helpful. So I'd love to put her in touch with you.
That'd be great.
Great. Anything else for Robin? So, a letter?
Yes, so Robin, I, I would like to know, we used to always get kind of a report on the nuclear waste and if you know that or how that's being disposed of. I understand that it was originally way back going to New Mexico, and then there was a fire there, and they no longer could transport there. So how is that being done? If you can give us an update on that issue?
Sure.
I'd appreciate that.
Sure. I do know that they have, there was a, a moment where they stopped moving the nuclear waste off of the campus. But they have begun to resume that. And so it, it's not, I, I need to find out the schedule so that you'll know, you'll be able to see, oh, they're moving it today or whatever. But to be honest with you, it's, you would never know, because it's not, it's, it's so well-done. The, the material is put in containers that are multi-layered, and they're, they're huge containers. And then the state police escort the nuclear waste out of here and onto 55 and, and on their way. So it's, it really is not, there's very little time that it's in any, it's never in a neighborhood. Let's put it that way. It goes from the laboratory and pretty much right on to 55. So it's, that's why there's not a, a ton of concern. But I'm more than happy to let you know what the schedule is.
They're currently shipping it now, too.
I think I can tell you what, I'll, I'll share with you. It's on my laptop, but I don't want you all to see all. But I do know, it's, it's west. It's west.
Anything else? Robin, thank you very much. We appreciate it.
Thank you for this. Thank you for the opportunity.
All right. That takes us to receiving of communications. Excuse me. Takes us to city clerk's report.
No report this evening. Thank you.
City administrator's report.
Uh, no report, Mayor. Thank you.
Department have information and questions? Any questions for either Mr. Gombach or Chief Thomas?
Alderman Kenny? I'm going to kind of piggyback. My computer had gone down during communications. Dan was able to give me an information for a resident called up Saturday before Easter. Had a skunk, a dead skunk on her, on her private property. And the county given, she called the county, and the county given her some, some firm out near Kane County who were going to charge her like $400 to get, get it off and get the animal off the property. Well, Dan found, gave me a couple of resources, and she was able to get it off for about a hundred and twenty-five bucks. So, so. And that was, that's Lee Lowry on Walden. And then for police commit, for police, we all got emails from Courtney Mayberry regarding a stop school violence grant. Didn't, and I guess there's a deadline to apply for such a grant. Chief, do you know anything about it?
Yes, looking into it.
Okay. I told her I would mention it during the meeting here tonight, and I didn't want to forget. So, okay.
I think she wrote all of this.
No, she did. She did. And I, I respond, I respond like I do everybody else.
Anything else? All right. Takes us to our treasurer's report. Mike?
Thank you, Mayor. This evening, I'm requesting council's approval of warrant number 22, 23, 24. Very systematic, in the amount of $451,379.13 from listed funds, and payroll for the period ended April 6th, the amount of $267,140.83. Total will be approved, $718,519.96.
Motion to approve. Alderman Belzak, second by Alderman Sullivan. Any questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Belzak?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent.
The warrant's been approved. Mike, monthly report, February 2023?
Yeah, we have February and March. And as I explained to the council during the work session, I'm just going to read the end result numbers for March, just for expediency. For the revenue expenditure report for the eleven months ended March 31st, general fund year-to-date revenue of $17,996,750. Expenses of $11,907,257. Current balance, $8,988,428. Water fund year-to-date revenue, $6,660,506. Expenses of $6,557,861. Current balance of $3,549,414. Motor fuel tax fund year-to-date revenue of $1,10374. Expenses of $570,897. Current balance of $1,467,512. Water depreciation fund year-to-date revenue, $50,446. Expenses of $3,313,457. Current balance, $493,695. Capital improvement fund year-to-date revenue of $1,951,335. Expenses of $3,600,193. Current balance, $14,024,0572.
Any questions for our treasurer on our monthly report? Alderman Belzak?
Yeah, the revenue to date is 17 million, and the year-to-date budget is 14.8. Are, are we expecting to have 3 million more in income revenue this year?
Wait, I'm sorry.
I'm looking at.
Year-to-date revenue versus the budget?
Yes.
Yes.
Good.
Yes. Yeah, revenues, as we've gone through in the, in the budget meeting, the revenues, sales stacks, everything has been over what we expected this year, which is a, a good, healthy thing. Okay. Also, one thing I should point out, this is the 11-month period. If you remember, we take a pause in our monthly reports for April, May, and June while the auditors are completing their audit, because our fiscal year ends April 30th. So while they're working on that and the accounting adjustments for the accrual, the cash adjustments and everything are being made. So there will be a couple-month pause in the preparation of these statements until the auditors complete their audit part of it.
Thank you, Mike. Okay. Any committee reports? Any Aldermen have reports they would like to discuss? Alderman Belzak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Municipal Services Committee will have a meeting next Monday, the 24th of April, at 6:00 P.M. in council chambers.
Thank you. Alderman Sullivan?
The next Administrative Finance Committee will be on Monday, May 1st, at 6:00 P.M. in the conference room on the first floor at City Hall. And the next Economic Development, Development Committee meeting will be on Thursday, May 4th, at 7:00 P.M. in council chambers.
Thank you. Alderman Kenny?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Police Committee meeting was canceled for this, this evening. We took the one item and put it on the new business today, because we're going to have a change of committee members on that police committee meeting. Our next scheduled meeting is May 15th at 6:00 P.M. in the police training room across the parking lot.
Thank you. Takes us to questions and comments, agenda-related. Anybody from the audience have any questions regarding any item that's on the agenda? If none, it moves, we move to old business. If there being none, we move to the consent agenda. We have two items. Consideration of motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter an agreement with AIS Incorporated for computer consulting services in the amount of $96,024. Item B, consideration of a motion to approve one electronics recycling event with the city's current refuse holler, Lake Shore Recycling System, in an amount not to exceed $9,800. Motion to approve the consent agenda. Alderman Sullivan, second by Alderman Kenny, and the roll.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent.
The consent agenda has been approved. Takes us to new business. We have a number of items under new business. Item A, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution waiving the competitive bid process and awarding a quote for the purchase of one new 2022 Ford F-450 cab and chassis four-by-four from Coons Auto Group in the amount of $131,273.26. Motion to approve. Alderman Belzak, second by Alderman Kenny. Any questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Belzak?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent.
Item's been approved. Item B, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution. Item B, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor and city clerk to execute a collective bargaining agreement between the Metropolitan Alliance of Police, Darian Police Civilian Employees, Chapter 147, Unit B, non-sworn employees, and the City of Darian for a period of May 1st, 2023 through April 30th, 2026. Motion to approve. Alderman Kenny, second by Alderman Belzak. Any questions or comments? None, the roll.
Kenny?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent.
And the motion's been approved. Item C, consideration of a motion to approve a resolution authorizing the mayor and the city clerk to execute an intergovernmental agreement between the Board of Education of Hinsdale Township High School District 86 and the City of Darian authorizing school resource officer services for 2023, 2024 in auto, auto renewal. Motion to approve. Alderman Sullivan, seconded by Alderman Kenny. And again, questions or comments?
Chief, this was the item that would have been on our police committee meeting tonight. Do you want, do you want to talk about it a little bit since we didn't talk about that? Since we didn't have a meeting on that?
Sure, it comes up every year. And there's, the only real addition is that, so we don't have to keep coming back every year, it's gonna be an auto renewal unless one of the two parties don't want to continue. That's the only thing they add.
Anybody, anyone else? If none, the roll.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Belzak?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent.
The last item is consideration of a motion to approve a resolution extending proposal from J.C. Landscaping and Tree Service for the purchase and installation of landscape plantings and decorative rock for the Ellsworth and Stewart Overland Flow Drainage Project in an amount not to exceed $13,600. Motion to approve. Alderman Belzak, second by Alderman Sullivan. Questions or comments? If none, the roll.
Belzak?
Aye.
Sullivan?
Aye.
Gustafson?
Aye.
Clistic?
Aye.
Kenny?
Aye.
Five ayes and two absent.
And that motion's been approved. Takes us to the last item, which is questions, comments, and announcements of a general nature. Anybody on the council have anything they'd like to share? Mary?
I just have a question. So is it the next meeting that the changing of the guard happens?